If you have no questions, I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The minutes have been adopted. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Chair's report. Um, whoa. Um, nothing really to report, uh, much from me, other than this, uh, fact I want to, uh, express my extreme appreciation to Rhonda Allen for humoring me and allowing me to volunteer at Lennox Station on, uh, the Peachtree Road Race. It was a great, uh, opportunity to see MARTA at its finest as we were moving thousands of people around, and they were all in a good mood, even though it was early. Ms. Allen, uh, would not let me have a bullhorn, um, but, uh, hope to earn one next year. Um, and, uh, but it was, uh, it was really great to see, uh, the system at its finest. It was also great to see, uh, Chief Crayor's Incident Command Center there, um, because I feel like many times we debate things, vote on things, and don't get to see it in action. So, any opportunity you have to volunteer without getting in the way, uh, which is what I tried very hard to do, uh, I would certainly encourage you to do it. Um, I think that's going to tie in, uh, really well with, uh, uh, Colley's report, uh, which is a debrief from the July 4th. It's not just the Peachtree Road Race. I think the Decatur fireworks were also very, uh, big, uh, moving folks around. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to, uh, our Chair and, or our General Manager and CEO.
Thank you, Chair Worthy, and good, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, as Chair Worthy said, it was, it was a fantastic day. I, I'm, I'm actually going to ask, uh, Rhonda Allen herself to come up in a moment to, uh, to speak to you about it. But, a- as always, July 4th, um, the Peachtree Road Race in particular is a, is a signature event for the city. We had, uh, about 50,000 participants, up to an estimated 150, 150,000 observers. So, you, you take that in all, that's a really strong representation of, um, you know, vibrant, friendly, dynamic people, and they were all served and well-served. They were connected to and connected by good transit. It's an opportunity to shine. It's also an opportunity to, to stress your system and see where the, where the gaps are. And so, you know, because nothing's ever perfect, we've, we've invited, uh, Rhonda Allen, who is our, our Chief Customer Experience Officer, to come up and talk to the group. Because, um, as Mr. Worthy said, she, she deserves a whole boat of thanks. She really led the effort, ably assisted by many of the C-suite members. And then, that's planning and organizing, but when it came down to execution, it really was, uh, a huge Herculean effort by a lot of the staff and employees at MARTA. So, I'm not sure exactly how many MARTA employees were involved on the day, but perhaps, perhaps Rhonda will, will have that number. Um, putting her on the spot if she doesn't, sorry, Rhonda. But the, the fact is that they were, you know, from all across the city, all across the region, across the country, and in fact, across the world. So, it's a, it's a great opportunity and a great time for MARTA to shine. We're very pleased that, um, Rhonda led this effort, and, and without further ado, I'll ask Rhonda to come up and, and share with us what she's found.
Good morning, Chair Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and members of the MARTA Board of Directors. Uh, we'll move to the next slide. All right, so I'll, first I'll share a little bit, uh, as we go through this, about the event, um, you know, kind of how we normally, uh, do things, for those of you who may be new. Um, we'll talk a little bit about something that we did that was unique, uh, to us this year. You know, go through how the day went, uh, and then you'll see a little bit of the customer and employee feedback, and then that's what led to some of the ideas around opportunities for improvement. So, we'll move, move through, uh, the presentation in that fashion. Next slide, please. All right. So, uh, this was the 54th, I believe, running of the Peachtree Road Race, which is a 10K, uh, which is about 6.2 miles. It starts at Lennox Square, uh, runs through Midtown, and, um, all the way down to, uh, it finishes at Piedmont Park. There are generally, uh, 60,000, a max of 60,000 participants, but this year, um, there was a cap, I believe, at 50, 50,000 participants. Um, as you can imagine, there have been some changes, uh, over the last three to four years, um, as we've gone through this, um, this race, uh, through COVID, um, and are coming out of it, um, at this time. Um, one thing that we don't necessarily talk about each year, you may not be aware of, is that MARTA not only, uh, supports the kind of larger race that's, you know, widely known, but we also support the Shepherd Center Wheelchair Division. Uh, that's a race every year, um, begins at 6:25 a.m., uh, in the morning. Um, our mobility staff and mobility team actually assist those, those individuals, um, before and after, uh, the event, but particularly after the event. Uh, the elite runners begin at 6:50, uh, the last wave, start wave, ends at 8:30. Um, that begins our transition from, you know, getting everybody in for the event to moving over to Midtown and helping everybody who's coming back in. So, the course, uh, closes around, uh, 11 a.m., and that's when we see that spike and peak of people coming back in through the Midtown area or Piedmont Park. Um, and there are, uh, award ceremonies that are held at the Shepherd Center and at Piedmont Park, um, as well, that we support. Um, sorry, before we move to this, uh, from this slide, you know, on the right-hand side, it just kind of shows you, you know, where the, where the course starts. If you look at the very top right, you'll see the start. Um, so our Buckhead and Lennox Stations are the most heavily used. That's where everyone's exiting from, uh, to get to the start line. Uh, and then folks will pass down, um, in, near the end of the event, Art Center, Midtown, and Lindbergh Stations are the stations that are heavily used, uh, at the end of the event. Next slide. So, a- again, so, you know, our planning for this begins early in this, in the spring. So, you know, the months of May and June, we spend quite a bit of time coordinating with the Atlanta Track Club, uh, on the event, including site visits at our, at our rail stations and at the park. Uh, M-P-D spends, um, a, quite a bit of time with other public safety agencies, uh, including, uh, tabletops, uh, exercises to prepare for the event, um, and possibilities of other, uh, external factors, um, and being ready, uh, to respond to those. And then internally here at MARTA, um, as with most events where there's a ridership that's going to be, uh, a greater than about 40,000 in one specific period of time, we activate our special, uh, events planning meetings, and we hold those weekly with, uh, about 24 departments here at MARTA participating in those every week. Um, two days, or that day, two days before the race, July 2nd and 3rd every year, uh, MARTA also supports the Health and Fitness Expo. Uh, Revenue Operations Team is there diligently every year, selling fair media, um, and Customer Services is there also answering questions, uh, around how to, how to use MARTA and how to prepare for the event, for, for those racers. These are some of the folks that perhaps maybe use MARTA only once or twice a year, and so it's always great to have them have reminders, you know, get their, their tickets in advance, um, and be well-prepared, uh, for race day. On race day, um, we normally have the Emergency Operations Center, um, activated, uh, and it's just, it and rail service both started at 4 a.m. That's a little earlier than normal on a holiday, uh, schedule, um, for us. We also had pre-event, uh, bus shuttles at Lindbergh Center, um, to help if there's any type of overcrowding, uh, at Lindbergh. Um, as you may imagine, individuals who do this from year in and year out, they establish a pattern. Uh, many of them, you know, want to go to Lennox Station as their start point. They think that's the best way, and they, sometimes they feel like that's the only way. And so, they, if they started off, uh, further south and they were on a red line train, they have a habit of exiting here at Lindbergh. Sometimes that creates a, a bit of a crowd here, or there's folks who will start their journey by parking here at Lindbergh Center and will use these bus shuttles to get over to the start line. Um, so we do have those, uh, those shuttles here. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, what we may do differently there, uh, in the future. Again, the mobility shuttles, um, go from the finish line at 10th Street over to the Shepherd Center to support, uh, the, um, end of race and the celebration there for those, uh, wheelchair athletes. And then we also have post-race shuttles that, from Piedmont Park, to take individuals directly up Piedmont Road and, uh, get them back here, uh, to Lindbergh Station, uh, every year. Oh, we've been doing that, I think, for the last four or five years so far. And then there's always, as, uh, Mr. Worthy, I think, mentioned, the activation of the Mobile Command Vehicle somewhere, um, in the vicinity of the, kind of the high ridership, uh, or high activity areas. Uh, and then, as, uh, Mr. Greenwood mentioned, this is kind of a, you know, sometimes we'll hear the, hear the phrase, "All hands on deck," you know, from a, a ship's standpoint. Um, but there are many hands that are, that are, um, on, on scene, um, on July 4th for us. Uh, specifically, um, on our rail lines, we had over 100, I believe it's 103 rail operators, uh, that worked that day. 571 regular bus routes, um, operators. Um, we mentioned shuttles here, there were 31 shuttles, 31 shuttle operators. But, this is not just, you know, when we look at July 4th, we don't always think and only think of the folks who are here for the race or for, if, if fireworks happened in that evening, for, for those folks. But, we pay, uh, particular attention as well to the, the MARTA customers who just need our service on a daily basis, right? So, there were 571 operators who ran regular holiday schedule routes for us throughout the day. There were, um, upwards of 80, I believe it was 85 transit ambassadors, of which Mr. Worthy, um, was one. Uh, he did behave, even though he, he didn't get a chance to use his bullhorn, um, but he was much appreciated, um, uh, being there, as well as other MARTA executives, uh, who were on-site, uh, with us. Um, behind-the-scenes people that you may not see, um, they're not wearing gold shirts or police uniforms all the time. And again, there was a, a, you know, a great showing of police presence, um, at each of these stations, but we have mechanics, we have technicians, um, and other folks who are kind of, you know, making sure that things are running properly that you may not see. And so, I want to say thank you, and you'll see that, you know, from, not just from me, but from other customers, um, throughout the day, who are appreciative of, you know, what they saw from all of these, um, MARTA folks who maybe aren't necessarily front and center all the time during these events. Next slide, please. So, um, as I mentioned, you know, every year, the Revenue Operations Team supports the event, uh, by going down to the expo, and they sell the paper, um, uh, round-trip tickets, and sometimes they do sell the, the one-way tickets, um, you know, for pre, pre-event sales to prevent the masses of folks, you know, being at the, uh, at the vending machines early in the morning for those who aren't regular riders. Um, but this year, the Marketing and Sales Team and the, and the Revenue Operations Team worked, um, with our new, uh, Breeze Mobile, um, Fair Team to introduce, uh, stickers. NFC stands for, uh, Near Field Communication Stickers. Basically, these are tap, um, things that you can tap. So, to place stickers on the bib, if you look up, uh, here on the screen, each one of these little stickers had a four-digit, um, ticket ID. Um, if there was something that was outside of these ticket ID numbers, we knew that they were invalid or fake. Um, thankfully, we didn't have any of that occur, or at least to my knowledge. But these stickers were placed on the, uh, runner's bibs, um, and that way, they didn't have to worry to, you know, about carrying an extra card, or a mobile device, or, um, or money, um, along with their, you know, their, their race or their, uh, hydration, um, packs. Um, and this is something that, um, you know, the Atlanta Track Club has been asking us for a while for, like, how can we make this easier and more seamless, right? And so, thanks to the individuals, Kevin Hackshaw and, and others from the Marketing and Sales Division, we were able this year to implement these, uh, unique, uh, stickers. Each one of the stickers was loaded with a, with a, um, a round-trip fare, it's already prepaid, uh, by the Atlanta Track Club. They were activated only on July 4th, so individuals could not use them prior to July 4th and cannot use them after July 4th. So, uh, it's a use-it-or-lose-it, uh, situation, uh, for them, but that also prevented any type of, um, fraud or, you know, fraudulent use, or, or, you know, maybe mistaken use, uh, of these prior to event day. Um, customers, again, tapped in and out at the, uh, at the little machine there, at the, at the fair gates, and, you know, all seemed, seemed to go well, but there are, we, as we mentioned, there are some things that we are looking at to improve this, even though this is something new and we liked it, you know, there are improvements that we realize we can make, and we'll, we'll speak to that here shortly. Next slide. Um, so, every year, there's, you know, we expect that this is a, a, a kind of a warm event. Um, one thing that I was not aware of, uh, until this year, is that there are these alert levels that the Atlanta Truck Club has, you know, posted along, along the race lines. Um, and this year, there was heavy rain and thunderstorms around 10, 10:30, um, along the course, and so, the event, um, the, the organizers issued the black flag alert, um, due to poor or inclement weather. That meant that the event was canceled at that time, so the events, not, you know, the race itself, the course, people were pushed off of the course and onto the sidewalk to, to seek shelter and seek safety. Um, and the events also at the park, um, were also, um, canceled, for the most part. So, that led to individuals coming in a little bit earlier, maybe about 30 minutes earlier than we were expecting to, and there were long lines, uh, queued up. You'll see here, folks queued up for the, the MARTA bus shuttles, when they would normally, you know, kind of come in at a, at a, you know, not necessarily a consistent pace, but they would kind of wander in the park, have fun at the, uh, at the tents and all, and, and that just, it didn't happen this year, and it kind of led to some long lines. And you can see here, at the bottom right, um, some of our ambassadors in the, in the gold welcoming back folks who are, you know, braving the rain and running down, or running up, uh, 8th to get back to Midtown Station. But we think, and also with the, I'll, I'll also mention, um, the Mobile Command Center here at the top, top right. Uh, it, I would happen to be standing right beside the Mobile Command Center when that, uh, that issue or that alert level changed, and the Deputy Chief said to me, "Oh, a black flag, uh, alert has just come out." And so, the communication between the, uh, the, the EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, the Mobile Command Unit, um, the Atlanta Jock and others, was, you know, was, was shown. It was like on display there, and it was, you know, it was helpful for us to know exactly what was going on. So, I'm thankful to have had, you know, that opportunity to be there and see how that was, um, gone into effect when there was something that was unexpected that occurred. Next slide. All right, and so here, um, a little bit of customer feedback. Um, for the most part, um, our customers were pleased, um, with, uh, with their experience. You'll see here, the folks are, you know, said, "Well, you guys did an amazing, amazing job. It was a pleasant experience. Not sure how MARTA would pull this off, these large events, if it, you know, how Atlanta, I'm sorry, the, the region would pull this off without MARTA." So, folks were appreciative, um, you know, of what we did and the work that we're, you know, was done. There's a specific comment here, salute to each and every MARTA employee who was out there. You work hard, day in and day out, so I want to just echo that, that that didn't come from inside of MARTA, that was external, um, from something that was posted on social media. Um, so I want every MARTA employee to understand and, and to know that, uh, their efforts are appreciated by our customers. Um, however, there were, um, you know, there are some areas where we can make improvements. Um, we got people walking up at, at Midtown asking, "Well, where are the shuttles? Where were the shuttles at the park?" Um, so we need to do a better job with signage, you know? So, they saw a sign that said MARTA, they expected that that was going to take them to the bus shuttle that we'd been advertising, but instead, it took them here to, to the walk to, um, to Midtown Station. Right, so we'll do a better job with that, with working with the Atlanta Track Club on making sure that folks know exactly where they're, that they're going in the direction that they intend to go, right? And that we make the best use of the shuttles that we have. Uh, there were individuals who did, uh, manage to take the shuttles, uh, north, um, and their trip ended at, at Lindbergh Station. They did not realize that they needed to have a, you know, paid MARTA fare in order to be able to validate and, and leave these parking decks. So, one, uh, so we had a few people that said, "Well, there are people stuck at the parking, at a parking deck at Lindbergh." So, again, we'll work with, um, the operations managers for those, uh, parking decks. Um, just, if you're not aware, there are several decks here at Lindbergh Center that are not managed by MARTA staff, and so, we, we, we can't really control them, but we need to be able to express to them, "Hey, this is a large ridership event, and we, you know, we would like for you to staff up the way that we staff up to support, um, folks who maybe get stuck or who, who don't understand the, the operating structure for that day." There's also what used to be called the AT&T Deck that was closed, um, you know, and, which is different than years past. And so, we failed to, to sign appropriately that that deck was, you know, was out of service. And so, we then had to move staff, MARTA staff, to that area to provide, you know, other direction as to where folks should go. So, we'll make sure to take a look at those types of things that have changed from year to year and ensure that we communicate properly, properly, um, in, in the future. Um, some other comments, I'd, I'd love to use that sticker that you have, but I really only need a one-way, so I'm just going to go back to the, to the old method. And so, maybe there's an opportunity there to sell not just round trips, but one-way, one-way, uh, tickets or stickers, um, for those individuals. Uh, and of course, we hear this all the time, um, not new to us, the BVM isn't, the Breeze vending machine isn't accepting cards. Um, so we do make a, you know, make a habit of going out and checking these prior to events, but there's, you know, there's always that random time where something's, you know, is, is failing us. And so, um, thankfully, you know, we're, we're moving into a phase where we'll be able to replace these machines, um, you know, but we'll continue to monitor those and do those pre-checks, uh, prior to the, prior to the event. Next slide, please. So, again, as I mentioned, there are some opportunities for improvement. Um, you know, folks, again, have their, their standard way of, of, a standard pattern of riding. Uh, again, they may want to go directly to Lennox, and that's where the start line is for them. Um, but, you know, in all reality, Buckhead Station is just as, as good a location or, or a, a destination for the start line. In years past, uh, individuals were not able to go directly to Peachtree Street to walk to the start. However, the Atlanta Track Club has actually changed, uh, the pattern of, of walking, and so we just need to market that, in that you won't have to go around the back of the station and, you know, walk what seems to be another mile to get to the start line, but you can get off at Buckhead Station and go directly to Peachtree Street, and it's just as easy to get to the start line as, as Lennox Station is. And that will take some of the pressure, relieve some of the pressure off of, of Lennox Station and off of, uh, Lindbergh Station, and perhaps we, we have less of a need for those bus shuttles that we mentioned at, at Lindbergh Station earlier in the morning. Um, not having those bus shuttles at Lindbergh means that we can deploy them in other places that, where it would be a little bit more, more meaningful and effective. Uh, again, you know, paper, something that's paper, uh, of course, is, um, you know, not necessarily very resistant, uh, to water and, and perspiration. We're used to that with the, uh, Breeze tickets, um, but we didn't necessarily think about that with these stickers. We were so excited about the new development and using the stickers that, you know, we didn't test them and, and make sure they were, you know, waterproof, but perhaps next year, we'll be able to do something that's even, even better with, with, you know, perhaps wearables of, uh, of another sort, right? Um, you know, we did see people kind of doing a limbo because of where you had to place your body in order to scan the bib if you had it already attached to your body. So, something like using a watch, or, you know, or using an armband or something would be easier for folks to get through, and so, we will investigate, um, you know, the, the possibility of, of, of wearables that are more resistant to water and perspiration, uh, next year. Again, we talked about improving the wayfinding, uh, from the bus shuttles or to the bus shuttles from the park, um, and then talking to our parking deck operators, um, who are not, uh, MARTA, uh, not operated by MARTA. Uh, one last thing is that we'd like to, in the past, we've had the Atlanta, a member of the Atlanta Track Club inside of the Integrated Operations Center, um, or the, um, Emergency Operations Center with us, um, and we'd like to, uh, invite them back. I think the person who usually staffed that, uh, for them, um, has left the organization, and we fail to ask, "Hey, can we have a replacement for that individual?" And so, you know, it'd be nice, uh, for us to have that, that communication directly, um, from a, a representative of the Atlanta Track Club in the, with, alongside the Matrix Team at the EOC. Next slide. All right. And I know I've spoken a thousand miles, uh, a minute, and I apologize, uh, for that, but I was kind of excited about, uh, getting up here and then also excited about sitting down, so... But if you have any, any questions, I'll take questions. I'm sorry, Chair Worthy.
Rhonda, do we know how many people, first of all, did everybody who had a bib have a MARTA pass that was given to them by ATC?
No. So, um, I believe-
So, that was an option for people?
Yes. So, when the registrations went out, um, the Atlanta Truck Club announced, announced this or, or marketed it, and so folks could sign up when they registered to say, "Hey, do you want a MARTA pass along with your bib?" So, I believe there were about 1,300, um, bibs that were pre, that were pre-ordered, uh, in advance, and then, um, those individuals who didn't, like, register to have MARTA, uh, I believe over 3,200 were sold-
At-
-at the expo, right? So, there are approximately 5,000 bibs, um, that were, that were in use, uh, during the event.
Okay. Thank you.
You're right. And there are some, some individuals who maybe get a ride, you know, they ride there and get a ride home, and so, yeah. So, not everybody, uh, needs or buys a round trip from us.
Mayor Floyd.
Does the Atlanta Track Club pay anything to MARTA for extra services?
No, I do not believe that they, they do not contribute to, uh, service or paying for the service for MARTA. They, uh, assist with the sale of the, you know, of the passes at the expo and help us to get a booth to help, you know, us, you know, collect that, uh, the, the revenue in that, in that aspect, but they do not provide any type of funding, uh, for the event.
Has there ever been a conversation about that?
Not to my knowledge. Um, I think that would be akin to, you know, we, we serve, we serve and service all types of special events, and we don't charge others for, you know, any type of service. What we are doing is, uh, making a plan to make things easier for us, so we're not necessarily providing any type of, uh, you know, other than handling the crowds that we would for someone else, we're not doing anything special, you know, for, for them.
I'm not trying to sound like a horrible human being here, but, for asking this, but, you know, like, a lot of times, local police departments, if there is a special event going on, and they provide extra people and stuff like that, they'll charge the event for something like that. I'm just wondering if, if, so it's never come up in a conversation like that?
Not since I've been involved. I, I will, yeah, I can ask other, maybe from External Affairs or some others, but not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Now, I will, I will state, though, that when there's, you, you're right, when there's extra security that's required, um, I believe M-P-D does work with some others to make sure that we are compensated for if there's additional MARTA police officers that are needed for certain events.
Okay, do we, do we have any way of keeping up with our cost associated with these events? Do we-
Yes, we do.
Do we do that?
Yes.
Is that something we could see?
Yes.
And, and is that true for any event, uh, like, the Super Bowl or something like that? Is there, is what this event costs MARTA over and above what the-
Yeah, generally speaking, we serve these events as, as MARTA has, MARTA, as Rhonda has said, you know, it's in our best interest to upscale in terms of the amount of service we put out there, the amount of employees, but that's not a charge-back, uh, item that we consider when we're serving those events.
Okay, I, I, I think my only point, like I said, I'm not trying to sound like a horrible human being to the Atlanta Track Club people, but, uh, some of the stuff is normal service, and you would expect, if we're going to have 10,000 more riders than normal, we'd be expected to, okay, that's our job. But, it seems to me like sometimes there may be things that they need or want. It ought to be things that, you know, if they, I don't know what they charge for these bibs now. Would, I wa, I, I did, I participated in this by sitting in my chair and watching it on TV this year. So, uh, it just seems to me like we ought to at least have that conversation with them at some point in time.
And I, and I will be clear that the Atlanta Track Club pays for the price, uh, or the cost of the rides for the, for the, the bibs and all, so we're not, you know, giving away any, uh, any revenue, but the extra cost of, say, you know, me being there or an ambassador being there is borne by MARTA and is, is more in line with MARTA providing service and, and making sure that we are caring for the, you know, the customer, whether they're the, uh, any special event customer or whether they're the, the everyday public, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Greenwood, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Chair Worthy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, much appreciated. And just, you know, in closing on that, on that point, you know, there were no other major events, uh, in the city going on that day, aside from the Decatur fireworks, so no baseball, no soccer. So, we were in a better position to sort of saturate the service landscape with the resources, so it did go, it did go seamlessly, uh, on that day. So, uh, with that, I'd like to turn our attention to upcoming events and meetings of significance. Aside from the, the, um, information normally in your packets, you'll find that the Writers Advisory Council is meeting in person on Wednesday, August 2nd, uh, that the MAC meeting, the MAC Committee, um, is meeting on Tuesday, September 12th. And overly, if you'll find that there are a couple of APTA-related events. One is the APTA Transit Board Member Seminar that's happening this weekend in Birmingham, as well as the APTA Transform Conference on Sunday, October 8th in Orlando. And that, that concludes my portion, Chairman Worthy.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. At this point in time, uh, there are three matters, uh, in executive session, uh, that we need to take up. One real estate matter, one litigation matter, and one personnel matter. I will entertain a motion for the board to enter executive session. Mr. Durick moves, Mr. Pond seconds. This will be a vote by hand. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. Okay, we will head into executive session. All non-authorized attendees in the room, please-
I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. It has been moved and seconded. Oop, I clicked too fast. Please let it reflect that I did not vote against the minutes. Perfect. Thank you. The minutes have been adopted. Next item on the agenda is public comment. The public will be allowed, the public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public portion, comment portion of this meeting will not exceed 45 minutes. If the 45 minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting. Each public comment is limited to two minutes. I see we have a full house and over 20 minutes, 20 people signed up to speak. If we would like to get this done in an orderly fashion, even though everyone will have their two minutes, I would encourage you not to repeat something that speakers have already said in your two minutes, but that is up to you. First, public speaker, Mr. Clyde Higgs of Atlanta Belt Line.
So, good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Clyde Higgs and I'm the president and CEO for Atlanta Belt Line, Inc. And I just first want to say that we at ABI are supportive of Belt Line Transit. So everything that I say after that, just hear that we are supportive of Belt Line Transit at the end of the day. So I read a fact, some data produced by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and it suggested that in the next 27 years or so, that Metro Atlanta is going to add almost 3 million people to, to the area. Let's, let's think about that for a minute. 3 million people in Metro Atlanta. What are we going to do? And so I submit to you that advancing high quality rail transit along the Belt Line is imperative. And I'll share another stat with you. Our data suggests that roughly 13% of households along the Belt Line don't own a vehicle. That's significant. But if you look at some of the key areas that are having challenges, and I'm specifically talking about the west side of Atlanta, Sub Area 10, almost 30% of households there do not own a vehicle. And so I just want to be very explicit that Belt Line is very supportive of rail transit immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Higgs. Mr. Patrick Waldron. Patrick Waldron. Patrick Waldron. Is, uh... Okay. Thank you. I'll tell you what, why don't we call Beth Smith while Mr. Waldron comes through the metal detector, Beth Smith.
Hi there. My name is Beth Smith and I live in Eastlake, which is not a Belt Line location, but I am a proud owner of an electric bike and it is helping me get to my errands and recreation a lot easier. And I, like many of you, enjoy the Belt Line and its biking and walking components. But really and truly, I am so happy to be here today to witness what I hope is a unanimous vote in support of advancing the light rail transit portion that we've all been waiting a really long time to see materialize. And I want to thank you and Atlanta will thank you. There will be some bumps on the road, for sure, but I'm optimistic that we will end up with a fantastic project and I'd like to see Atlanta come together and make sure that this truly is a Belt Line that serves all of Atlanta.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Patrick Waldron. Mr. Waldron, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Waldron. I'm a resident of Inman Park. Love the Belt Line. I'm an actual Atlanta native, raised in West End. And I really basically just want to say that as a child, I rode the legacy streetcar system in Atlanta. Maybe there's probably the only one here that maybe has. But I'm looking, that's history now, but I really want us to consider moving forward with the Belt Line rail and also I'm imploring you to approve this contract and also to have really a world-class streetcar system. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron, in the interest of fairness, our clock operator wasn't working, so you have more time unless you are...
No, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Matthew Rao.
be much cheaper, much less disruptive, much faster to implement, and much more useful to people. So, I would implore this board to not just look at a streetcar, but to include a study, and it wouldn't take much more effort to include a study for autonomous buses on a path parallel to the Beltline. And I think you'll find, you'll make a better decision if you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durda. An old friend of the authority is next, Mr. Jeff Rader.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, let me get my item up. As said, I'm Jeff Rader. Thanks to the MARTA staff for responding to the Old Fourth Ward Neighbors GORA request for documentation of the Streetcar East Extension LPA analysis, including 30% construction designs. The documents reveal the utter inaccuracy of the renderings posted on ABI's website and elsewhere purporting to show rail transit implementation on the Beltline. Instead of the leafy spacious rendering circulated, the 30% design demonstrates the obliteration of the linear park, the removal of most of the tree canopy, continuous fencing, and the elimination of the most, most of the access points on the west side of the corridor. Interested community members are now working to provide accurate rendering showing how rail transit will disturb, destroy the conditions that have made this segment of the Beltline a green space success and how trail expansion to safely separate wheels from heels will be made impossible. If you want to see what Beltline Rail will do to what we have now, just go south of Glenwood where the right-of-way is being bulldozed from east to west to serve this obsolete vision of heavy, high-capacity transit. It is a moonscape.
Mr. Rader, the clock isn't working, so...
Thank you.
No, you're, you're not done. You still have time.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Also, consider the impact of disruption on development plans. If you ruin this, I think that developers will forestall development until all of the development's done. Finally, do a full EIS with a no-build alternative, a real ridership analysis and clear-eyed construction state, staging plans. Tell the truth. Stop Beltline Rail before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. Jay Miller.
Thank you and good afternoon. I'm here to speak in opposition of the Streetcar Extension and the design project associated with it. I don't need to tell you MARTA has multiple large projects facing it, the demand prioritization, and perhaps in some instances, triage. The Streetcar project is one that I submit should either be set aside or de-implicized. You've heard this countless times, I'll just say it once more. We're talking about a $250 million and up project for a 2.3-mile extension. I call it a stub. To spend that amount of money now when any extension of the Streetcar line was over a decade away makes no sense. The gentleman here before talked about the west side. This is on the east side. There's not going to be any extension over to the west side for many, many years if then. You may have noticed there was an op-ed piece in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution this last week where Bill Torpe wrote on this topic. He interviewed Ryan Gravel, who I'm sure you all know or know of. He was quoted as saying, "We shouldn't concern ourselves with the cost-benefit analysis here because lots of other projects lack cost-benefit analyses, too." Is that a convincing argument to you? I hope not. Hundreds of millions of dollars that are to be expended matter. Gravel was also quoted as saying he doesn't know what the ridership is going to be for this extension slash stub. But we know, don't we? Right now, the Streetcar has very little ridership. How many more do you think are going to ride in their car to a station or perhaps bike or even walk to the Streetcar so that they could ride 2.3 miles and then get off again? I would submit hardly any. What's worse is that the Streetcar, if implemented as designed, is going to tear up neighborhood streets, destroy thousands of trees, acres of green space, and irreparably damage Atlanta's jewel, the Beltline. Are there any people here who have environmental concerns? Are there any people here who care about eminent domain running amok, which is in the plans if we don't do something about it?
Mr. Miller, your time is up.
Can I speak for 20 more seconds?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please wrap it up.
Please, please visit the Beltline on a weekend. It is teeming with people. It's overcrowded. It's potentially dangerous. The way to alleviate the danger is to add an extra line for electric vehicles. If you put in a Streetcar there, it's going to hem in the people on the Beltline and it's going to make it even more dangerous. That's absolutely the wrong way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Jason Lathbury.
Good afternoon. My name is Jason Lathbury. I'm a downtown resident, a MARTA rider, and the chair for the Georgia Sierra Club Transportation Committee. Today, I'm speaking to you as all three. I encourage the MARTA Board to approve funding to progress the Streetcar East Extension. By doing so, MARTA will be one step closer to realizing the vision decades in the making, bringing clean, reliable, high-capacity transit to the Beltline. As the state's most successful non-car transportation corridor, the Beltline connects homes, jobs, shops, recreation for thousands upon thousands of people, myself included. I use the Beltline for shopping, for recreation, for getting food. I take my e-bike, but as a downtown resident, I am a user and I would be a user of this Streetcar expansion. By bringing light rail to the Beltline and directly connecting the Beltline to the wider transit network, Streetcar East will be the first push to completing those non-car mobility options that we were promised so long ago and which the Beltline has proven an enthusiasm from the rest of the city to adopt and to use as so many people show up. At a time when we are reaching historic surface and ocean temperatures, our ice sheets are unable to recover, even in the middle of winter, when our skies are hazy from historic wildfires and, and historic weather events are pummeling us across the globe, we cannot hesitate to implement clean, reliable, high-capacity, high-quality transit in our most successful non-car and car-like corridor here in Atlanta. As both, as both downtown and Beltline continue to have infill with housing, commercial properties, we need to serve these people. We need to give them opportunities other than driving. So, again, I am speaking as a resident, as a MARTA user, as someone who uses the Beltline, and as someone who is very concerned about the environment, I support you in approving this contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lathbury. Lauren Von Holland.
My, my name is Lauren Von Holland and I am a downtown Atlanta resident. I live about a five-minute walk southwest of Woodruff Park by the Five Point Station, and I urge you not to delay the continued progress on the Streetcar and to award this contract to HDR today. I live downtown, but I have worked on the east side Beltline for several years, and I can tell you that the Streetcar would be the best tool connect, to connect the amenities and the activities on the east side trail to those in the downtown neighborhood. We are about to get an influx of downtown residents. There are thousands of units in the pipeline today, which means that awarding this contract can and would connect a node of residents, jobs, and activities to another linear cluster of residents, jobs, and activities. And this is not just my voice. The Atlanta Downtown Neighborhood Association, which represents downtown residents, sent an open letter in April to this board formally supporting the Streetcar Extension. To add a little personal color, I have commuted by bike from the center of downtown out to the east side Beltline for years, so I know this route, in the rain, in 95-degree weather, in 25-degree weather. I would really love the option to get on the Streetcar. But I have also run several ultra-marathons, so the people who don't want to do this is everyone else. My friends, my family, my coworkers, they would love to be able to come to downtown and vice versa without having to jump on a bike. As I said, the Streetcar is this fabulous tool to unlock lots of potential between downtown and the east side Beltline and, and really, I think that all of the neighborhoods from downtown to Inman Park to Virginia Highlands would benefit from this. I urge you to award this contract today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Von Holland. Brandon Sutton.
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Sutton, Atlanta native that has been riding MARTA since the lighting of the Great Tree was in the downtown riches. I've lived in Cabbage Town adjacent to the east side trail since 2001 and lived on the Beltline and Old Fourth Ward of the mid-1990s. I spoke to this board in 2019 as a principal member of the Hulsey Yard Study Committee when we are finalizing the community-led and neighborhood-funded master plan for the site. Although CSX has yet to sell the land, we are hopeful that the eventual transition will involve a development plan for this crucial junction that takes the community's unprecedented volume of input into account. Over 1,000 people from the surrounding neighborhoods participated in the public input sessions for Hulsey, including rounds of voting on key development concepts and site characteristics. Most relevant to today's discussion is the overwhelming support for rail transit on the Beltline. In fact, three of the 11 redevelopment fundamentals of the master plan are, one, preserve the Beltline corridor, two, advance Beltline rail, and three, integrate with MARTA. All three framework plans that were included in the final documents show Beltline rail transit running through the site. To put a finer point on it, the redevelopment of Hulsey Yard only works with Beltline rail transit being fundamental to the plan. The master plan can be downloaded at hulseyyard.com for anyone who's interested. Many of us who live and work in the communities surrounding the east, east side trail, along with our neighbors to the south and west, have waited and waited for the promise of Beltline light rail. We have watched as explosive development in the area has choked the local streets with gridlocked vehicle traffic and produced increasingly inequitable outcomes in our neighborhoods. As the years have rolled by, without the transit component of the Beltline being delivered, it has been hard to trust that the original promise of the Beltline will ever be kept. The first step forward with light rail on the east side trail is a crucial component of Atlanta's transit future, and I'm here in full support of moving the design process forward. Thank you for your support of light rail transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Jeremy Sharp.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Jerem Sharp. I'm a...
I apologize for getting that wrong.
No problem at all. My name is Jerem Sharp. I'm a car-free downtown resident. I'm the vice president of the Casper Hill Neighborhood Association, secretary of MPUM, and also treasurer of the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board. While we talk a lot about operations and capital projects such as the Streetcar East Side Extension, I think it's important that we also begin to focus on marketing and outreach and engagement efforts, which better inform and also educate residents throughout the city. MARTA is brought up very often in neighborhood association meetings and also NPU meetings without there being any representation, and this sometimes will lead to further misinformation being spread about MARTA and the public perception of MARTA being further diminished to a, at a point when MARTA does not have the best consumer brand value. And a great example of this is how the general public does not know or very much understand that the Streetcar is planned to be a system that runs and moves people and residents throughout the entire city. Many people believe that the Streetcar is only to cater to tourists because of the current route and upcoming expansion, when people should understand that the downtown loop and also the east side extension are just parts of a planned larger system. And so, I urge the MARTA Board to begin looking at marketing more seriously and exploring creative outreach methods that would educate the general public. And I recently sent this morning the MARTA Board an email about something called MARTA Bike, which is a bike-share program that could also double as a marketing effort to improve MARTA's perception and also increase ridership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Nathan Club.
Thank you.
Let that run out.
I get more in three seconds?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Nathan Club, I live in Ormwood Park, which is one of the neighborhoods on the south side of the Beltline, where I also serve previously as neighborhood association president, and I also serve on the board of Beltline Rail Now. The 832 bus runs right in front of my house, or as my daughter calls it, the zoo bus, because that's how we get to the zoo. Anyway, we are excited today to move forward with the design of the first segment of the Beltline through awarding this contract to HDR. On the south side near me, there are a lot of Beltline neighborhoods where folks are transit-dependent, just like Clyde mentioned earlier. In addition to that, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are experiencing rapid growth. For example, we have Boulevard Heights, which is, it was just literally tripled in population. And we have Chosewood Park, which is set to quintuple in population. And the only way to prevent all of this part of the city from being car-choked, being stricken by car-centric development, to be truly sustainable and actually meet the vision and the dream that was put forth by the Beltline, is to go forward with Beltline Rail. And so, right here today, this is our chance. This is our chance to build sustainable, equitable Atlanta, and so, I urge you all to vote for that future, that vision here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Club. Robert Lloyd. We'll just keep it up here. Perfect. Miss Huff is going to keep it on her phone since our technology isn't working on that thing. So, Mr. Lloyd, welcome.
Sounds good. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for your time and attention. I live in Adam Spark. I'm a regular and frequent user of MARTA Transit, train as well as bus. I'm a regular and frequent user of the Beltline, the west side trail near me as well as the east side trail. I'm a PhD student at Georgia State University in the Urban Studies Institute studying transformative infrastructure, including the Beltline, and the extent to which the Beltline as transformative infrastructure is reliant on the transit component. To that, and I am, I am absolutely a supporter of the light rail component, including the Streetcar. I am a big supporter of human-scale transportation, pedestrian... when MARTA does not have the best consumer brand value. And a great example of this is how the general public does not know or very much understand that the streetcar is planned to be a system that runs and moves people and residents throughout the entire city. Many people believe that the streetcar is only to cater to tourists because of the current route and upcoming expansion, when people should understand that the downtown loop and also the East Side extension are just parts of a planned larger system. And so I urge the MARTA board to begin looking at marketing more seriously and exploring creative outreach methods that would educate the general public. And I recently sent this morning the MARTA board an email about something called MARTA Bike, which is a bike-share program that could also double as a marketing effort to improve MARTA's perception and also increase ridership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Nathan Club.
Uh, thank you.
Let that run out.
I get more in three seconds?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Nathan Club. I live in Ormwood Park, which is one of the neighborhoods on the south side of the Beltline, where I also serve previously as Neighborhood Association President, and I also serve on the board of Beltline Rail Now. The 832 bus runs right in front of my house, or as my daughter calls it, "the zoo bus", because that's how we get to the zoo. Anyway, we are excited today to move forward with the design of the first segment of the Beltline through awarding this contract to HDR. On the south side near me, there are a lot of Beltline neighborhoods where folks are transit-dependent, just like Clyde mentioned earlier. In addition to that, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are experiencing rapid growth. For example, we have Boulevard Heights, which is literally tripled in population, and we have Chosewood Park, which is set to quintuple in population. And the only way to prevent all of this part of the city from being car-choked, being stricken by car-centric development, to be truly sustainable and actually meet the vision and the dream that was put forth by the Beltline, is to go forward with Beltline rail. And so, right here today, this is our chance. This is our chance to build sustainable, equitable Atlanta, and so I urge you all to vote for that future and that vision here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Club. Robert Lloyd. We'll just keep it up here. Perfect. Uh, we're- Ms. Huff is going to keep it on her phone since our technology isn't working on that thing, so- Mr. Lloyd, welcome.
Sounds good. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for your time and attention. I live in Adams Park. I'm a regular and frequent user of MARTA Transit, train as well as bus. I'm a regular and frequent user of the Beltline, the west-side trail near me, as well as the east-side trail. I'm a PhD student at Georgia State University in the Urban Studies Institute studying transformative infrastructure, including the Beltline, and the extent to which the Beltline as transformative infrastructure is reliant on the transit component. To that, and I am absolutely a supporter of the light rail component, including the streetcar. I am a big supporter of human-scale transportation, pedestrian, bicycle, as well as a strong public transit. And because of that, I want to address as well another aspect of things happening now on MARTA with MARTA that I think has not been adequately addressed by the MARTA organization, and that is the Five Point Station renovation. I'm not clear on the drivers for it, other than the changes to the bus bay, which are meant to improve service. I understand the desire for aesthetic improvements, but the main thing moving that forward that I've seen referenced is the World Cup game that's coming up, right? The top desires of public transit users, actual and prospective, are fast, frequent, and reliable service. And other than the changes to the bus bay, I'm not clear how this renovation supports those needs. I think that the aesthetic should follow the service component, and that if the aesthetic portion is moved forward at the expense of the service improvements, that this represents theft from the Atlanta people in favor of folks attending the World Cup. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lloyd. Walter Brown.
Good afternoon. My name is Walter Brown, and I have grave concerns about the proposed funding for the streetcar. As envisioned by TPL's Emerald Necklace Study two decades ago, the Beltline Linear Park has blossomed into something wonderfully impactful in ways that rail concept can never offer. It seems obvious that a far better use of the Beltline has emerged that millions of diverse users are responding to, using their feet and their bikes to transport themselves along Atlanta's great linear park that has stimulated billions in investment already and rivals New York's High Line. Trying to make the vacant streetcar more viable by spending hundreds of millions more is the complete opposite of good planning and fiscal responsibility. No hypothetical ridership study is required to demonstrate the need for expanded beltline capacity now. Spending these funds on better transit projects with real ridership needs seems like a better answer. We ask that you amend the current proposal with alternatives that do not ruin the success that the Beltline has become, including a full NEPA 106 and Georgia Environmental Policy Act review, a truly public process that does not simply try to implement the current set of drawings, additional capacity for light mobility options, bikes, scooters, and on-demand autonomous vehicle options in the future, protection of existing tree canopy, and avoiding forcing Trees Atlanta to destroy all of the trees it has planted over the last dozen years. Avoid harmful impact to businesses that are flourishing now on the Beltline. A ridership study that can fully justify itself and compare this to what an expanded cycle-track system could generate. A cost estimate for capital and operating costs for the entire Beltline, not just the easiest phase to pull off now. Let's have faith in our ability to leapfrog over older technologies by taking advantage of the explosion in micro-mobility systems. Let's be bold and not old. I urge you to place a hold on these funds or insist that meaningful conditions be added to the current proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Michael Dobbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Dobbins. I am a professor of practice at Georgia Tech. I was the Commissioner of Planning and Development for the City of Atlanta in the Olympic era from 1996 to 2002, and I'm here to say two or three things. First of all, praise. I think it has been a wise move for MARTA to focus a lot of its attention on buses as equity projects that have a better chance of reaching people in real need. I also think that food markets and agriculture and the use of your land has been very progressive and moving in the right direction, including development projects that are both small and large. But I'm here today to say that I think it would be very valuable if you could pause the HDR contract and consider some of the choices and options, and even looking more deeply at the realities of what this proposal does. I have a handout that I'm going to give to Colleen to hand out to each of you that goes into more detail, but the main thing is that the two-track system is going to obliterate continuity across the Beltline. It's going to continue to crimp the users, bicycle people and walking people, sharing the same 14-foot lane. So I think an alternative could be to single-track the project from where it ends now to Potts. The distances are short, like Mr. Miller said. The headways could still be very prominent. It would give you room to actually have a separate cycle track and a walking track. And I've got a one-page handout that I'm- Colleen, I'm sure be happy to share with you or anyone else in the room. So the main question I think I have here is to please pause and step back for a moment. The points that people have made about cost, time of delivery, the basically crushing the use or the future use of the bike-ped trail. So that's enough for me for now.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins.
Thank you.
I cannot read this first name, so I will not try. Last name, Brazington. It's Ro-
It's Robin, sorry.
Robin. Oh, well, now I see.
My hands shake when I drink too much coffee, so.
Ms. Brazington, welcome.
I didn't prepare anything to read out, but I felt like I needed to come advocate for myself. I live at the end of Auburn Avenue. I actually drive to this neighborhood every day to take my child to a special-needs school. My driveway is going to back up about 50 feet from a planned stop. I live in a single-family home, and when I've tried to advocate for myself online, I've been told, you know, that I'm a Republican, or I hate Planet Earth, or basically, I feel like I've, you know, I'm neither of those things, and I just want access to the transit I use every day, which is my car. And this streetcar is not going to be useful for my family. My street right now is quiet. It doesn't have a bus route or any public transit. All it has is like a golf cart thing that looks like a trolley, which is for the tourist, coming from Martin Luther King Jr.'s birth home, which is, of course, the famous, the reason you moved to that street, you want to raise your child on a street with good, good things that came from it. So, oh my gosh. I don't want to cut my trees down. I'm sorry. Transparency is what I asked for, because I learned about this installation last year at the community meeting. I've been in my home 10 years. I've seen all the ways the Beltline has changed my neighborhood. I don't like it. It feels corporate. It feels like it's losing its character. My neighborhood was already walkable. I moved there from Edmond Park so that I could walk my kid to preschool. I mean, I don't know. Please don't cut down the willow oaks that are growing on the Beltline. That's- I'm sorry. This is such a mess.
Thank you, Ms. Brazington. Anne Marie Keatsman.
Hi, thank you. I'm Anne Marie Keatsman, and thank you for the opportunity to share my comments. I am a really strong supporter of smart, sustainable, and equitable transit for our community, and the streetcar East Extension is none of those. So I respectfully ask the board to consider the following. The estimated costs are $260 million. There is no ridership data, and the project is not eligible for federal funding. That is not smart. Hundreds of mature trees and acres, as stated before, of treasured green space will be replaced by concrete rail beds, retaining walls, metal fencing, and overhead wires, all for antiquated technology. That is not sustainable. More than 30 projects around Atlanta from more MARTA were postponed indefinitely to accommodate the significant costs associated with this one project. That is not equitable. The construction and infrastructure required, as you just heard, will negatively impact several communities, including historic Sweet Auburn neighborhood. And as many of you know, eminent domain will be required in multiple areas where existing space constraints cannot accommodate the streetcar. That is neither smart nor equitable. The project will forever change historic communities and what has made the Beltline Linear Park so special and unique and an incredible draw to visitors from all over the world. Please consider alternatives that are more financially viable and less destructive. And I encourage you, anyone who doesn't have an image already of what this could look like, go to HDR's website and take a look at their photo gallery for the rail projects they've done so far, and you may get a good idea of what it could look like. Again, a separate lane for wheeled vehicles, separating foot traffic from wheeled traffic, would be a much better alternative. If you've ever walked the Beltline on a weekend, you already know that that need is apparent. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Keatsman. Amanda Claire Reeve. Welcome, Ms. Reeve.
Thank you. So, well, I guess I'll repeat my name. I'm Amanda Claire Reeve, and I'm also a resident that lives near the lady on Auburn Avenue, and I'm coming here on behalf of myself as a homeowner that has owned a home that is on Howell Street, which is a one-way street in the Martin Luther King National Park. It is the only way that I can get from anywhere else in town back to my home is going through the one-way to cross over Edgewood to Howell, either from a turn left, a turn right, or going over from DeKalb Avenue and up. So it's going to be- I'm very confident, as someone who's also lived in this neighborhood for almost 20 years, I'm very confident, as someone who's also seen what the streetcar, original streetcar project did, to the enjoyment of being able to utilize Edgewood and Auburn Avenue via bicycles and other non-car vehicles. It is- I never go down that route anymore. And I'm very, very concerned with not being able to enjoy and having a lot of safety hazards with having the current plan in place, with going both ways down to Edgewood and then turning onto Randolph and then going down Auburn to get to the main entrance point that most people use around Crogue Street on the Beltline. I am frequently active in my neighborhood association, and I'm also the safety liaison, so I go to a lot of safety meetings with the police, giving updates, and I've discussed alongside my other neighbors regarding the blockage that we get often for delivery vehicles that are blocking bike lanes, as well as Uber Eats drivers and other sorts of delivery services. And the police have mentioned many times they do not have any control over moving those vehicles. I also want to bring up something I brought up in another meeting before, where this is one of many accidents that have happened at the corner of Edgewood and Auburn Avenue, and that is because we do not have stop signs. My neighborhood association has tried to implement stop signs in working with our council member, and we've been told this for the second time, that the main reason why we cannot put stop signs at this intersection is because it will impede the streetcar's path. I cannot tell you how many times I've seen accidents here or near accidents here, and I do need to follow up with the Commissioner of Transportation, because I did promise I would do that, but it's a little bit busy for me to go to all of these meetings and then do work and participate in my neighborhood association and have a life as well. So I try to participate as much as possible, and I also need to follow up with Georgia DOT, because they have also seemed to have some concerns about this. It's just one accident, and this car is- both cars were totaled.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve. Catherine Chestnut.
My name is Catherine Chestnut. I'm here today as an Edmond Park homeowner. I'm also a business owner in Old Fourth Ward, and some of you may recognize me as the woman who's been recently bullied by some of the rail folks. Most recently, I was mentioned in the op-ed last Sunday. I'm not against rail. I am not against transportation, to be perfectly clear. I am against this plan for rail and transportation. Now, as a business owner, I can tell you that my business is in Old Fourth Ward on the Beltline. Most of the people, there's about 180, that come to my offices do not come in a car. They walk, or they ride their bikes, and I do not see that changing. Most of them live within a mile or two of that facility. I also spoke in March at the town hall meeting, and at that time, I mentioned that the HDDC did a study that 40% of the businesses that are on the current streetcar route did not survive the construction period. Those are small businesses like mine that employ people in the community. 40% of them did not survive the construction period because the city did nothing to help them. In addition to that, I'm also on the Old Fourth Ward Business Association Board. I spoke to many of the businesses that did survive that are on the route. They say that they barely see anybody on the streetcar currently, and they had a loss of between 30 to 50% in revenue during that construction period. Those are sales and tax dollars that did not go to our state to support other projects like this. Many of them said that COVID was a breeze compared to dealing with the construction period of the streetcar route currently.
Ms. Chestnut, that's two minutes. If you want to finish your thoughts.
I just want to say, please consider alternatives. Consider alternatives to this route. It's destructive to Sweet Auburn, and it could be very brutal to a lot of the small businesses that employ people in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chestnut. Jennifer Benson.
Good afternoon. You guys heard from me at the last meeting, so I won't reiterate what I said last time, except to summarize it to say that this contract, this $12 million contract, I hope that if it is approved, that there are a lot of changes that are made to the plan the way that it stands now. Like Mr. Higgs, I am also supportive of Beltline transit, but the plan, the way that it has been laid out to date, and thank you to MARTA for providing that information via an open records request, it is not good. It is not pretty. It is going to be something that the city will be very disappointed in, the residents will be disappointed in, and it needs to be reconsidered. There needs to be a review of other forms of potential transportation instead of a streetcar that requires digging up a street and putting overhead lines. There needs to be the publication of the results of the Irwin Street Study that happened quite some time ago, and we have still not seen the results of that study. We need to understand what happened as a part of that, what is proposed to address concerns that may have come about. We also expect that the updated ridership study that MARTA has committed to be done shortly and the results of which be provided. We think there are other ways of accomplishing this objective of having transit on the Beltline that don't involve the streetcar extension. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benson. George Chitty.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chitty.
Afternoon. I'm George Chitty. I'm a writer. I worked for Central Atlanta Progress and served as a city councilman in Pine Lake for some years, and I'm here to speak in favor of rail on the Beltline. Normally, if I'd want your attention, I'd write something, or I'd send you an email. I wanted you to see me, and I wanted the people in this room to see me, so that I could very clearly and plainly indirectly describe the implications of failing to implement Beltline rail. There are people here who would prefer an alternative to rail, and I respect them. Like, they're people I have known for a long time, and they have my deepest respect. And I'm not here to denigrate Bus Rapid Transit as a transit solution, because it has its place, but not here. When I'm not writing about rappers behaving badly, I'm writing about poverty and crime and inequality in the city of Atlanta. And I have discovered that much of this can be traced back to bad transit options for poor people who live in the city of Atlanta. Black people in South DeKalb are still sore over not having a rail line going down there. A bus line along the Beltline is cheap. The permanence of rail is the point. It sends a signal, both to those poor residents who live in South Atlanta, that rail, like a preferred means of transportation, will come to them because of the investments that are made here today. And it also sends a very clear signal to developers that are looking to create density, that this is the place to do it. I think the people of South Atlanta and people who are facing deep, deep inequality in this city, just once, would like to see the priorities of affluent property owners weighed fairly against their interests. And if this isn't implemented, that is how that's going to be perceived, that black people in Atlanta get second best. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chitty. That concludes the in-person public comments. Mr. Andrews, will you summarize what we've received by voicemail and email?
Yes, sir. We have 15 public comments by voicemail. All of them will be attached verbatim to the minutes of the meeting for your review. If you'd like, I can read through all of them, but I think that that's going to take probably another 40 minutes, so I would say we just attach them verbatim to your comments, 13 minutes, excuse me.
That sounds good to me. Any by email?
I'm sorry, some of these are email, most of these are email, some of them are voicemail.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Moving on to the agenda item, agenda, or on to the agenda, agenda item number two is resolution authorizing placement of insurance policies for Summerhill BRT due to timing, my colleagues. This did not come through committee, so I think Mr. Andrews has a presentation for us, since it was not vetted by committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Donna Jennings will be presenting for us. She was able to secure the insurance program policies that you'll be hearing about.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and members of the board. I'm here today to request authorization to place two insurance policies to support the Summerhill Bus Rapid Transit project. Next slide, please. The authority recently executed a contract with Archer Western to build the BRT line, and the purpose of my presentation is to briefly define the two types of coverage we are providing and to outline the total cost of the coverage. Next slide, please. Staff determined it is in our best interest to provide a project-specific builder's risk policy and to add this project to the existing general liability owner-controlled insurance program, or OSIP. Builder's risk coverage protects the authority's property and, while on-site, the contractor's materials, equipment, and other property during construction, and the policy provides coverage on an all-risk basis with varying levels of deductibles and limits of $59 million. The policy term is two years and costs $145,000. The general liability, OSIP, provides coverage for multiple projects, including the ongoing station rehabilitation project, and the policy provides primary and excess liability coverage for the job site risks of MARTA as the owner, the general contractor, and subcontractors of all tiers. The policy has a $50,000 deductible and limits of $150 million. Adding the BRT project to the existing OSIP policy costs $855,217. The benefits to the authority of a controlled insurance program include the following. It protects our operating liability self-insured retention and excess insurance coverage by ensuring adequate liability limits are in place for the duration of the project. It simplifies the procurement of liability insurance coverage for all parties, including the owner, because each contractor does not have to supply its own liability insurance. It prevents disputes among contractors, owner, and insurance companies in the event of a claim, as there is a single policy that will respond. And importantly, it allows for broader participation by DBE firms in this project by eliminating the hurdle of having to provide significant liability insurance limits on their own. Next slide, please. The total cost for the insurance programs provided by the authority is $999,932 and is funded by 100% local capital funds from the project budget. I respectfully request your approval of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. I will entertain a motion for approval of this resolution. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions for Ms. Jennings from the board? Mr. Pond.
Donna, I have one other question. We've talked about this before, and this is an insurance program that's widely used for these kinds of projects, but elaborate a little more on the numbers of projects, the time period, about the coverage for the second piece of the insurance.
For the OSIP program?
Correct. OSIP. How many years are we talking about? How many projects are we talking about?
Well, this program has been in place since we implemented the station rehabilitation project in 2020 or 2021, when that first started, and we're rolling this project into that existing OSIP policy, because it provides some, the additional benefits that I outlined before. So it covers multiple projects. It covers all of the station rehabilitation work that's going on in that particular project, as well as the parking lot paving program and this BRT project.
So this premium is an addition to what we already have in place, correct?
Yes, sir.
For this particular project?
Yes, sir.
And any others? Any other projects in addition to this?
The station rehabilitation project that's already ongoing and has been ongoing for the last several years is also included in it.
Mayor Floyd.
This is additional premium for additional, to add a project to.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I don't understand why we're seeing this now. What happened? What's causing this to come before this board today?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, as you recall, the board approved the contract with Archer Western to construct the BRT, the Summerhill Rapid Transit Project. As part of that RFP, we had insured or we had told all proponents that they'd be covered by our OSIP program. When they came in and we negotiated the contract, they were concerned about some gaps that they felt were in the OSIP compared to what they would be doing on the property, and so we agreed to fill in a portion of those gaps with this additional policy. They've also taken out an additional policy. So this was the best way to move the project forward, because, as you're aware, groundbreaking took place a couple weeks ago, and if we went through the regular cadence, if you will, of the committee programs, they would have had to delay start of the project until September, and we didn't want to cause that delay over this insurance issue.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the gap part of it, Peter. Is it, I mean, when you bid this project, everybody's seeing that, why is it coming up today and not three months ago?
It was a position that their risk management folks took at Archer Western as we were negotiating the contract. It was the last open item, and we thought we had found a resolution. When we brought the original contract to you, and then after the contract was approved, their risk management team wouldn't sign off, and so Ms. Jennings was able to find a workaround to keep the program moving forward.
So it's a million-dollar expense to MARTA for this gap that the contractor questioned about? Am I understanding this right?
It's definitely an issue that the contractor brought up, yes, and the delay costs would have exceeded the premiums that we would be paying.
Okay, well, is this something we're going to face from now on, or are we, how are we going to deal with an issue like this?
No. Now that we've, you know, had this pushback, you know, we're going to address it on the future BRT projects that we're doing, so it won't happen again.
Okay, now, is this something that should have been in the contract, that it should have been a contractor's responsibility to figure this out?
The contractor could have figured it out for a much larger dollar amount that would have just been found its way into our contract, candidly. So, this should have been caught on the front end, and it wasn't. It's been resolved now, and it won't happen again.
But it's an expense, and I guess what I'm trying to get you to say is an expense that we would have incurred if we'd recognized it three months ago or we recognized it today.
In one way or another, yes.
Finding a, you know, a need for a million dollars on the floor that we didn't know existed and...
This would have, this would have been paid for one way or another, yes, so it's a cost that would have been captured at some point in time.
And if I'm understanding this right, the contractor would not have moved forward had we not agreed to do this, or we would have had to pay him more, much more money than this?
That's correct. They would have had an issue with their bonding, if I remember correctly, Donna. Is that accurate?
I believe so, yes, sir.
So, yes.
So the bonding agent had, bonding company had an issue with this also.
That is my recollection, yes, sir.
Is this, and I'm sorry to be persistent about this, but is this an issue that has not come up in the past?
So, most of our projects, when we're working, are on our own property. So like when Ms. Jennings was talking about the station rehab, that's 100% on-site, our property, so the OSIP does a better job of covering all their concerns. We're operating in the right-of-way, we're operating in temporary construction easements on other folks' property, and that's where this issue came up, to oversimplify it, right?
Yes.
Well, that makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
Well, part of my questions were asked by Mayor Floyd, but just to clarify, because it says Summerhill Bus Rapid Transit, and it's coming out of the capital programs, will this affect other Bus Rapid Transit projects other than Summerhill?
No, ma'am. This is just for this project.
Pardon me?
No, ma'am, this is just for this project.
Right, but it's coming out of the capital programs.
The Summerhill, the Summerhill capital budget.
So it could affect funding, because it's a million dollars being taken away from the capital programs. Is that correct?
This will have no impact on the other projects.
It will not have any impact on other BRT projects.
No, ma'am.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the board? The motion passes. Moving next on to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, it was not allowing me to vote, but if you'll mark me as four, please.
Thank you. Vice Chair Powers. Okay, we've got that handled. Moving on to committee reports, first, first committee report on the agenda is Business Management. Chairman Duritt.
Mr. Chair, and the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, June 22, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of the replacement of the computer-assisted dispatch and automated vehicle locator, also called CAD/AVL system, RFP P44859. And B, resolution authorizing a modification and contractual authorization for contracts utilizing state-of-Georgia contracts and/or the Federal General Services Administration and state-of-Georgia contract for network, server, storage equipment, and professional services. I request approval of these two resolutions.
Chairman Duritt has moved. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. Please vote. The resolutions are adopted.
The committee also received the following briefing, the disadvantaged business enterprise program review. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Duritt. Next on the agenda is the Planning and Capital Programs Committee. If the board will indulge the chair, given the amount of comments that we have received today, I believe that these two resolutions should be split for a standalone vote, so I would make a motion to amend the agenda so that these two resolutions coming out of the Planning and Capital Programs Committee are split. And that motion, practically, that motion would mean that when Chair Powers reads this, the electronic vote would be for the Cleveland Metropolitan ART, and then we would vote by hand for the Streetcar East Extension Project. That would be my motion. I would appreciate a second.
I would second that.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of amending the agenda to split these two resolutions apart, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is amended. So Chair Powers, let's move forward with the, with the electronic vote that would be Cleveland Metropolitan ART.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, June 22 of 2023 and approved the following resolutions. B, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the single-source procurement of shelters for Cleveland Metropolitan ART projects, RFP P50364. I request approval of that resolution.
Chairman Powers has moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Agenda item 1B has been adopted. Chair Powers, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to agenda item A, if you will accept it, to include in the resolution the following language. Work will be phased, so that HDR's initial task will be to provide recommendations to improve the reliability and functionality of the current streetcar network, such that the proposed enhancements will benefit the design and operation of future streetcar extension.
If I may.
I'm not questioning what you're doing here, but I think it's important that you acknowledge, Chairman, that this was... Approved by the committee and presented, and you, I think you need to formally do it.
Yeah, you read it.
I think I need to read it first before you remove it.
Thank you for keeping me honest on the Roberts Rules of Order.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, June 22 of 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of architectural and engineering design services in support of Atlanta Streetcar East Extension Project, AE 50293.
Now would be a time that I would offer a friendly amendment if the chairwoman would accept it.
So, Mr. Worthy, if I may, I think there should be a motion, which I think Ms. Powers has made, there should be a second, and then discussion where you can actually make the amendment.
Is there a second for Ms. Powers' motion?
Yes.
Mr. Zagabe seconded. Okay, any discussion? Counselor, may I now make my friendly amendment?
Yes, you may.
I would, I would move to amend the resolution to include the following language. Work will be phased, so that HDR's initial task will be to provide recommendations to improve the reliability and functionality of the current streetcar network, such that proposed enhancements will benefit the design and operation of future streetcar expansion. That is my motion. I would appreciate a second.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on my amendment?
Question.
Mr. Pond.
Could you elaborate what that means? I would envision that we would do a minimum amount of planning and take a hard stop to reevaluate. Could you just elaborate?
The basis of this motion is, I think that this is a very passionate issue on both sides. I think we've heard from a lot of well-meaning folks that want more answers than what we currently have. So I think HDR's task, and I think that almost everybody in the room agrees that HDR is up to the task, but I would like for HDR's task, first task in a phased approach, to be looking at what we have, all the way from rolling stock, ridership, all of that, what we have on our existing streetcar, and how that could be... we have on our existing streetcar, and how that could be used to make any future Streetcar East enhancements better. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Scott.
Should we identify a timeline?
I would defer to...
To reevaluate.
I would defer to counsel and Mr. Greenwood, but I think that that would be in the GM's discretion.
Thank you, Chair Worthy.
But we'll, we need the resolution to say it so that we would know when to identify the timeline. We don't want to get to the end, and then there is no language in what you read that gives a timeline.
The, the current contract with, or the proposed contract in scope with HDR has always anticipated their review of the design of the new Streetcar East Extension and how it would tie into the current system. And based on what I'm hearing is that the concern is, and again, it sounds, it sounds like the motion is to look into the current streetcar system, to see how we can improve not only the current streetcar system, but use those improvements to benefit the Streetcar East in the system. So it's going to be, it's always been part of their contract. I think that the phasing of it on the front end won't impact the design on the back end, but we can absolutely make sure that when we're negotiating the contract, that we put gating timelines in there, because there are another, several other timelines that need to be met. I don't want to throw a timeline out there today without actually having to sit down with HDR to ensure that we don't miss any of the other proposed timelines on the 100% design, if that makes sense. So we will, so I don't want to put words in the GM's mouth, but we will absolutely take it under advisement on creating gating or timing restraints, if you will, on each phase of the project.
By its, by its nature, the requirement for phasing suggests that HDR is accountable to MARTA in terms of when they're completed one part of the task and on to the next. In terms of quantifying that time, it really wouldn't be prudent of us to establish that here today. HDR is going to have to take a look at the, at the extent of the work in front of them and, and give us an estimate about when they think that would be completed.
Right, but what, from what we're hearing, and all of the passionate comments we've heard, and based upon your amendment to the resolution, it appears that we need to say we will evaluate at a certain point within the project, and not necessarily be at the completion, or 75% completed, or 90% completed.
Right, right.
So I would think it would be beneficial to the community if we identify a timeframe, and then we would be able to answer some of the questions that are being asked by the community. I'm not saying we have to do it today, but I would like to hear something in that resolution that identifies where we are, when we are, and what the concerns are, and how we have addressed them. Does that make sense, Tor?
I'm going to take an issue with this. I think, I think the broader this is, the better.
One question, and I ask that answered the questions that anyone had that I was asking.
And I'm going to take issue with that, if you don't mind. I'm questioning whether the broader this is, the better it is, it seems to me like. And I think the intent here is what's important. Rather than trying to get into too specific about a timeline and all that, if we're going to award this contract, let's award it, okay? And let's go forward. We've always got the right to say to somebody, whoa, we don't, we need some more information. And I think what we've heard here today is that we're looking for more information about this as we get into it. And I think that's, if I'm understanding it right, I think that's the purpose of this. So I'm fine with the broadness of it, and I don't know, I'd like maybe to hear from Jacob, what he thinks.
Ms. Scott, I'm not walking away from your question, but...
Thank you, because I wasn't finished asking.
So just, I have comments on the overall, but on this amendment, I hear two different things here. I hear a comment around amendment to look at the existing system and how we make it more efficient to serve the expansion. That's a very clear scope. My one question there would be, does that change the cost of what we're going to do adding additional scope? But I hear that as an amendment. I hear a second thing from Ms. Scott, which is around, I want to create a checkpoint to evaluate whether we go forward or not, which I view as a very different question, or give more information to the public, which I view as a very different question, and something that should be part of the ongoing design process with community engagement and different pieces like that. And we can decide whether we want to put interim, but I would say, I do view the amendment and that comment as two different pieces.
My question was not about whether or not we move forward. It was identifying, what I found is that when we do not identify at what point we would provide that information, then we don't have a timeframe to identify that information. It could be at 90%. My issue is, my concern is not around actually voting for the project to move forward, but because the resolution identified that we have top signs, top stop signs within that, at what point are we going to do that? And if we don't identify whatever we feel is necessary, then we won't do it.
I think Mr. Greenwood has a comment.
Might I recommend, Ms. Scott, that we do have other opportunities along the process where we will naturally be coming back to the board with updates and information. So it stands to reason that if this is Phase 1, by the time, whenever that time is we come back to the board, that information will be readily available. So you will have the opportunity at that time to review, opine on, on that information.
Right. I just don't, because you mentioned Phase 1, I don't want us to be at Phase 4, and we have not come back and identified.
Understood.
So that is my concern.
Understood.
Not on moving forward, but on what, how we do what we do and our accountability of how we do it.
So does, does that recommendation answer that concern?
Pardon me?
Does my recommendation answer that concern?
Would you repeat your recommendation, please?
That there will be a number of points in the process that MARTA will be coming back to the board to review the project. And it stands to reason that if this is the first phase, all of that information will be subject to your review at that point.
So some, what I hear you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, say, for instance, before we move to Phase 3, at some point before then, we would have had, we would have received more information along with recommendations.
Correct.
So, if I can give you some more comfort, Ms. Scott, with all of our projects, the first gating thing is to enter into the contract with the scope. From there, you'll get opportunities when we have to come back and make real estate acquisitions, vehicle purchases, and things of that nature. So there'll be many more opportunities and updates throughout this entire project, just like all of our projects.
I appreciate that. I just wanted, because of the fact that we were changing the verbiage in the resolution, I thought it was very necessary that we identify specifically what we were saying and when we expect that information. Thank you.
Mr. Pond.
I think Ms. Scott's concern, I agree, is she was using the word timeline. I think what Mr. Andrews used is certain phases, so what I think she wants, and what several of us are suggesting is, is this project has three or four design phases, hard stops, before we get to the end, so we don't want to get to the end before this information comes out. So very early on, there should be a milestone, a specific milestone, that we define the project in more detail and evaluate these concerns, so...
Mr. Duritt.
I agree with the sentiment. I think doing it in the resolution is not the appropriate place to do it, so...
Okay, so as I, I think that it, I think that the will of the board is crystal clear, and I think the GM has heard that loud and clear, as well as the chief counsel, as you negotiate the terms of this contract. The issue before us is the resolution and my amendment, which has been moved and seconded. Let's vote on my amendment before we move on to vote on the resolution in full or resolution as amended. So with no further conversation, will you please vote in favor, or I will take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of my amendment to the resolution, please raise your hand. Any opposed? I will now entertain a vote on the resolution as amended for this phased approach. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any opposed? Abstain?
No, I'm not abstaining. I, I want to make sure that, I'm voting on your resolution, that our previous discussion is part of that.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I want to make sure.
Okay. Ms. Jones, are you abstaining? Voted to approve, so it's unanimously approved, unanimously approved as amended. Next item on the agenda is the Operations and Safety Committee report. Mr. Pond.
Mr. Worthy, I...
Oh, sorry.
Have a little bit more about, from the Planning and Capital Programs Committee. The committee received the following briefing, see Kensington Station Master Plan. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Powers. Operations and Safety Committee, Mr. Pond.
Mr. Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, June 22, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for office furniture, RFP P50306, utilizing the federal GSA contract program. B, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for automated external defibrillators, I request approval of these resolutions.
Chairman Pond has moved approval of the resolutions. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. The resolutions are passed.
The committee also received the following briefing, MARTA bus collisions. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Next item on the agenda is other matters. Mr. Andrews, you have a matter from executive session?
Yes, sir, I do, one matter. That's to be seeking an approval of a settlement in the amount of $800,000 in the case of Allison Moody versus MARTA and Dwayne Johnson.
Mr. Andrews has asked for approval of a settlement of $800,000 in the catch-in case that he read. Is there a motion?
I move.
And I'll second.
Moved by Hardage, seconded by Duritt. Any discussion? Please vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yes, Mr. Pond voted in affirmative. Next item on the agenda is comments from the board, from the board. Mr. Frierson, I know that you have a comment that you would like to share with the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just say, I want to say thank you to the MARTA staff for allowing the legacy students who live in DeKalb County to experience transit at MARTA. Last month, the students were given the opportunity to tour the operations center and meet with some of the police department here at MARTA, and they were very influential in influencing those students' attitudes about transit. The whole program is designed to influence the middle students in DeKalb County and across this landscape to consider transit as an opportunity, and I want to say thank you to your staff for allowing that to happen, and specifically, I want to say thank you to Mr. George Wright and his staff, and Chief Krieger for, for bringing out all these wonderful things that the students could see and, and consider as an opportunity for them, as they decide where they want to work and, and be involved in, in their career. It was a great experience, and I want to say thank you to MARTA for allowing that opportunity for these students to be involved in it.
Thank you, Mr. Frierson. Mr. Zagabe.
Just a quick comment. I know most folks who made public comment about the project we just voted on have left, but for those that I still see here, I just want to say thank you for coming out. I remember when we voted for this, and I wasn't involved in MARTA, getting to public meetings, making comments was difficult, and just want to say thank you for your time. All of your comments are heard. I know people don't always see the same side on every issue, but, you know, all of the input's valuable, and, you know, this is a tough decision, it's a big moment for our city in Atlanta, so just thank you for coming out and letting your voice and opinion be heard.
I think we all echo that. Thank you for those kind remarks, Mr. Zagabe. Mr. Duritt?
Jacob, please.
All right. Any other comments from the board? With no other matters to come before the board, this meeting stands adjourned.